I guess I'll call the meeting to order. It is now five fifty-nine on March twenty-third, regular meeting of council. I call and adopt the agenda. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted circulated. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Brichetti moves. Counselor Packham seconds it. Any comments? None. Hearing none, can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All opposed? None carried? Move down to seven point one.
Mr. Mayor, we do have an addendum this evening.
Okay.
So in camera, we will be adding sewer collection system funding, Hiawatha Avenue, Minnehaha Avenue, Kennebec Street, Nye Avenue, Bulldog Streak, and Evelyn Avenue, please.
Okay. Can I have a motion for?
I'll move.
Counselor Brichetti moves. Can I have a second, or please? Counselor Clybert seconds it. All in, can I have any comments? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None carried? Okay, so we go down to now seven point one. Committee of the whole meeting, these are the minutes of the meeting. Be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, council held on March seventh, twenty twenty-three, be approved. Can I have mover, please?
So moved.
Counselor Packham moves, seconder.
I'll second.
Counselor Clybert seconds it. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None carried?
We skipped over opening remarks, but I just thought, because it just came into my hand, and I wanted to say something about International Women's Day, which was on March the eighth, that was like fifteen days ago. So I just wanted to say that that's an important day internationally around the world. You know, it's a day that we are reminded to protect women's rights and to make sure that there isn't any gender-based violence within our society and across the world. It's also a time to celebrate the achievements of women and girls in our society. And you know, it's fitting that we have a council here, Councilor Clybert, who's the only woman on our council, but she's here as a leader within our community. We also have stepped up to the plate our acting chief administrative officer, Ms. Lainey Shaw, who's our acting CIO, so she's a leader. So you know, it's important to, I think, to just take a few moments to recognize International Women's Day and to remember that women really play an important part in our lives. They strengthen our community, they bolster our community, whether they're entrepreneurs, educators, lawmakers, government officials. And we need to inspire the next generation to ensure that, you know, that they can live out their dreams and, you know, protect the folks who are, you know, of Black, Indigenous, racialized communities, seniors, trans women, people in remote and rural communities, and just to make sure that the next generation is inspired to live out their dreams and to be all that they can be. So just wanted to put that on the record, Mr. Mayor, and just be, just share your stories of successful women and young girls in our society.
You're here.
Yep. Thank you very much, Counselor Packham. So I guess we're in the committee of the whole meeting. Did we do that?
Seven-one, we got it.
Okay. Okay, seven-two, regular planning meeting of March second. Be it resolved that the meeting of the regular planning meeting of council be held on March second, twenty twenty-three, be approved. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Counselor Packham moves.
I'll second.
Counselor Campbell seconds it. Any comments? Questions? None? Can I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None carried? Let's see, now we're down to ten, ten point one accounts. Payment registry, I guess I have, is there any comments on it, questions on it? None? Okay, then we'll move on. Number eleven, monthly payroll. Be it res-
Go ahead.
Be it resolved that payroll for the month of February as follows be approved as presented. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor, Counselor Brichetti moves. Counselor, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Packham seconds it. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Okay, don't hear any, so can I call for the vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? None carried. So now we're down to communications. Minister of Municipal Relations, twenty twenty-three budget, that is received as information. Does anyone have any questions on it? None? Okay, I'll move forward. Fourteen point two. Minister of Public Relations has another letter out, municipal operating grants. Any questions on it? None? Okay, then we'll just continue on. Fourteen point three. Fourteen point three, Minister of Natural Resources and Northern Development, Dutch Elm disease. Does anyone have any questions on it? None? Okay. Go down to the next one. Fourteen point four, Minister of Transportation Infrastructure, PTH Intersection Project Improvement at Ames Road. Does anyone have any questions on that one? Any comments?
I got just a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
It's good to see the increase, I guess, in the grant that we received to finish that, since the timeline got delayed, I guess, through hydro and the costs and everything went up. So it's good to whoever end at the administration level was in there pushing for that. So kudos to anyone to go up almost just over a million dollars, so.
Yeah, I can speak to that if I may, Mr. Mayor. So this funding was originally announced in twenty seventeen, and so this extra funding, it's an increase of over one point one million dollars. And we can thank our Director of Infrastructure for pursuing that and successfully achieving those extra funds coming to offset our costs.
That's very good. Thank you very much for those comments. Fourteen point four-five, Manitoba Education and Early Childhood Learning. Does anyone have, this express event just, does anyone have any questions on this one? None? Okay, then I'll just continue on. Fourteen point six, RB, Red River Basin Commission twenty-three membership letter. Does anyone have any comments on it, questions? None? Okay, we'll just continue moving on. Now we're down to general business, number fifteen, for fifteen point one, border revision. Be it resolved that council of rural municipality of West St. Paul schedule the border provisions for the twenty twenty-four realty business, personal properties, rules, and added taxes for Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, at five P.M. Could I have mover, please? Counselor Campbell moves. Counselor Brichetti seconds. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, carried. Now, is Seven Oaks School Division Scholarship, fifteen point two. Be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West St. Paul award Seven Oaks Education Foundation for scholarships in the amount of three hundred dollars each for our graduating student from West Kaldonan Collegiate, Maples Collegiate, Garden City Collegiate, and Met School who reside in the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Packham moves. Counselor Brichetti seconds. Any comments?
Yeah, just say that, you know, glad to see that. It sounds like this is a tradition that the RM does. And so I just want to say that I'm glad to be able to support this and looking forward to seeing these scholarships given out to our students from West St. Paul attending West Kaldonan, Maples, Garden City, and Red Met School.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments? None? Can I call for the vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Carried. This is not. Go down now to fifteen point three, scholarship for West St. Paul firefighters. Oh, sponsorships. Thank you very much. Sponsorship for West St. Paul firefighters attending the twenty twenty-three Canadian Firefighters Curling Championship. So this is, whereas the resolution of West St. Paul firefighter Jeff Phillips and Ryan Smithson's will represent the West St. Paul Fire Department at the twenty twenty-three Canadian Firefighters Curling Championship in Prince Everett Island, March twenty-fourth to April first, twenty twenty-three. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West St. Paul approve a sponsorship for the firefighters Jeff Phillips and Ryan Smithson in the amount of five hundred dollars. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Campbell moves. Counselor Brichetti seconds it. Any questions, comments?
Yeah. Question, are they getting five hundred each or two fifty each?
As written, it's five hundred for both of them or two hundred and fifty each?
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
Yep.
Well, and we wish some luck. It looks like they're starting tomorrow, and it goes till April the first, so we wish our fire department representatives the best of luck in the championships.
I agree.
Bring it back.
Yes, bring it back. Got someone rooting for us. Okay, all, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. So now we're down on to fifteen point four, water main extension engineering design services. Whereas the conditionally approved residential development known as Riverview Landing requires the municipality's water main to be extended approximately two thousand six hundred meters north along Provincial Highway nine. And whereas the Manitoba Water Services Board has advised that there are unexpected funds from the cost share agreement dated March ninth, two twenty eighteen, between the Water Services Board and rural municipality of West St. Paul representing, respecting the phase-two water distribution system. And whereas the unexpendable funding could be used for engineering design serviced by Stanter Consulting for the extension of the municipality's existing water main from its termination point on Provincial Road nine, approximately one hundred meters north of Allenford Drive, to approximately twenty-six hundred meters north along Provincial High at fifty percent of maximum, fourteen thousand of the estimated twenty-nine thousand cost plus actual taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West St. Paul request the Water Services Board financial assistance for engineering design services by Stanter Consulting Limited for the extension of the municipality's existing water main from its termination point on Provincial Highway nine, approximately one hundred meters north of Allenford Drive, to approximately twenty-six hundred meters further north along Provincial Highway nine. The funds for the engineering design services for the extension of Provincial nine water main be borne by the water reserve until such time as they can be recovered through a development agreement. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Packham moves. Counselor Brichetti seconds it. Any comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Campbell, please? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. If I may address council through the mayor.
Yep.
Manitoba Water Service Board sends apologies. They did misquote the funding contribution under this agreement. This agreement has a thirty percent funding contribution. Their office did tell us that we can do a resolution asking for fifty percent funding, which they will present to their May board meeting. And so my recommendation is that council amend the resolution to request fifty percent of funding in a new contribution agreement. Should we not be successful with that, we do have the approved thirty percent within the existing agreement council has.
So the fifty percent is for, is there a date? You mentioned a date. What was the date for?
Manitoba Water Services Board's next meeting would be in May to approve that resolution.
Okay.
So- Just a clarification, in the, in the, in the resolution here, it says, like, the third paragraph says fifty percent? Are you saying that, are you saying to amend that? Or what are you saying?
Yes. So the, the funding contribution under the existing agreement for the phase-two water distribution system is thirty percent.
Right.
So we'd either need to amend this to reflect the thirty percent contribution, or amend the resolution to allow the fifty percent rate under a new contribution.
Okay.
Okay, so if, if council wishes to discuss, I have a draft resolution prepared to address a new agreement.
Anyone got any questions?
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering why this is being done right now. There are other areas that require water in, in our community and could, you know, for example, Riverdale needs some love and attention because some of the wells there are, people are concerned that they're no longer feasible. We need to do water in Rivercrest, as we discussed as council, and I'm just wondering why we're focusing on this. Now, I did ask administration ahead of time why we had the focus here, and I was told because we passed the development. But we've also passed development at Whistler Hollow, and we're not doing a water main extension engineering design report there. So why is it that we're choosing this one over other water main extensions that could be done?
The acting CEO, please.
Yeah, so I can address the comments to the Whistler Hollow. That development was approved without a requirement for servicing, and that's why we didn't address servicing for, for water in, in that area. The development that council has conditionally approved requires both wastewater and water servicing, so that's why we're proposing to do this study at this time.
Okay, so just for further clarification to the acting CEO, that developer in Whistler Hollow has been asking for water, and we have told them there is no water. So in this case, we're doing an engineering study where the developer does not have water units. So, you know, it seems a little bit a cart before the horse. And now our percentage of Manitoba Water Services Board has gone down as well. So if we, if we're in at a thirty percent rate, we're only going to get nine thousand dollars, and we're going to have to bear the cost of twenty thousand dollars for development with no ER units, and could be quite a bit down the road compared to some of the other things that are going on in our community. I'm just very concerned that we're going to have a developer come to us and say, why are you doing this for this person and not for me? That's, that's my concern. So there hasn't been, you know, we have to be fair. And I don't, I don't see this as being fair. I see this as one person over the other when this person's been waiting a long time. So I, I'm not in favor of this at the moment because of the, one, the reduction of what Manitoba Water Services Board has given us, but also I'm not in favor of it because I know there's other areas that are waiting for water and would be very thankful to have an engineering design research done on, on their area so that they could get water as well. So we haven't prioritized where we, what we're doing with water, and that should come before we start doing engineering designs. That's my opinion.
Counselor Campbell?
Counselor Brichetti will first.
Okay, just to clarify, we're not going to be borrowing the cost of this. It's going to be charged back to the developer on the development agreement, on the development that we approved with services. So this is, Water Services Board won't go into a contract with a developer, but they will go into a contract with the RM, so that's why it's going through the RM. I would prefer not to speak on other developments that we, that have been brought up. Well, I'm going to anyway. There was a lot of back and forth with Whistler Hollow. Just, I was there at the beginning of it, and the developer was working on city water, was working on multiple ways of getting water in. And at the end, we can't be liable for running the lines to Whistler Hollow. There's no lines running that way. This developer on this, the northern development is speaking on paying for those waters, water lines running to that development. So I would be in favor if the developer from Whistler Hollow was to come in and say, hey, I want to get water here. Let's see what the cost is on it. But nowhere in last term or this term have I heard a thing from them, so.
He's actually requested to, to come to council. And I, I do recall that we had that conversation. I think the thing is that Manitoba Water Services Board doesn't allow the developer to pay for the lines. It has to go through the public funding process. So that's my understanding of it when I spoke with them about water, water lines. So we should get a clarification on that, but that's my understanding of it. But my, my real concern here is, yes, this has been approved, but we don't have any water units for this, for this developer at this time.
Okay, Counselor Campbell?
The only thing I'll say on that, Counselor Clybert, is, and I, and I know we've sort of discussed it before, there is ERUs out in the community that people have purchased, and the ERUs aren't set for just a certain area. I know.
That is true.
So, so we don't know if this developer has partnered up with someone or not. So, you know, they could have ERUs that you or I aren't privy to that information.
No, but they're not allowed to do that.
No, no, they are.
Under our memorandum of understanding, anytime that somebody's not using a unit, it needs to be sold back to the RM, and then the RM can sell it out. Is that correct, acting CEO? That's my understanding.
I don't.
You can have joint venture.
I looked into it before, and that's not what I was told, but we'll, you know, for maybe another meeting, you know, ask the acting CEO.
Because I did ask Mr. Olnick that question before he left.
Yeah.
And he did say to me, and we discussed this with Whistler Hollow as well, because they wanted to do a joint venture.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, we were told very specifically, no, it has to come, units have to come back to the RM, and the RM then sells them out. So.
Yeah, you finished, yeah.
Yeah, so same thing before Mr. Olnick left. I had the similar conversation. I was told something different, so.
Oh, okay. I just want to verify.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Counselor.
I just want to clarify, we're not in a project with this developer, because we have a condition in his DA that says that the developers, the cost is charged out to the developer. So we're no way in a, in a, in a, any project with them to run water to their, to their development. It's mandatory for them, and we set it for them, that they have to get, they have to pay for the water there. I'd be willing to, if another developer walked in here and said that, yes, we'll, we'll do exactly the same thing for that developer as we would for this one. But it has to be set out in a, in a condition. Like, I've seen many conditions come through for that one, and they've changed over and over and over again, so.
Any other?
No.
Nope, sorry.
I would just, to the mayor, I would just say that if we do this report now, I would rather do this report closer to the time that development's beginning to start. And, and things are, have been settled as far as development agreements and, and ERU units and so forth. Once we settle that, I would be in agreement to go forward with this. But I feel like this is premature, and I can't support it, I just can't support it at this time.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Packham.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a question for our administration. I'm just reading the, I'm reading the resolution, and I'm trying to understand the, the process of how this came about. So the first, it says, it says, whereas conditionally approved residential development known as Riverview Landing requires the water main to be extended approximately two thousand six hundred meters north along PTH nine. Is that the trigger? Is that because there was a conditionally approved residential that then the RM now brings this forward? Is that how that works? Like, how did this come about?
Yes, so our Director of Infrastructure reached out to Manitoba Water Services Board to begin the discussions of how that looks once that development was conditionally approved for subdivision, knowing that there's a requirement to service that property. We do have an existing wastewater service line, the main truck line going past, but the developer is responsible for bringing water. So we need to know that, that servicing as well. We'll, we'll find out what kind of fire protection for North Main we, we can install, and for existing homes, what kind of water connections we can be planned, and, and sort of have an idea for future funding and grants. There's also the requirement to go under the provincial trunk highway, so it would be in coordination with MTI for approvals there. So with respect, it's, it's, we would not consider it too early in the process. Once the study's complete, it's the study that we'll use at any point going forward. It's not going to change. As we know, the costs always go up. As I recommended, I think that you should amend the resolution to request a fifty percent funding, but it's, it's a good step for the municipality to have the study completed.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Acting CEO. Yeah, just based on that and what Counselor Brichetti was saying, thank you, Counselor Brichetti, for that bit of a background, and for all, all my colleagues for the discussion. I think what, what Ms. Shaw is saying, like, you know, we did approve this development, and it was, you know, it, by and large, you know, it's not a perfect development, but it's a good development, I think, and this council did support it and approved it. And we need to keep moving. I think that this is the right course of action. Counselor Brichetti, I think, aptly said, this is going to be, this is going to be recouped through a development agreement. So it's to provide an engineering study so that we know exactly what, like, eyes wide open, what this development requires, you know, and everything else with regards to putting water here. So I think this is, it's, it's a good investment, and it's, I think, personally, the right move in terms of what we're doing. We are going to get the money back, and we have to support the development and growth of our, of our RM as it, as it unfolds.
Counselor Campbell, or Clybert, sorry?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I just think that it's early in the game here. We just approved this, and now we're already doing this. I guess the issue for me is, if we do this study, and then nothing happens for quite a while, then all of the study and the pricing that we're getting is going to be outdated. So what I'm saying is, why aren't we doing this a little bit closer to when we're actually going to engage and get going on it? Or are we getting going on it right away now? Are we, without ERU units, are we right away going to start laying pipe?
No, there would be no intention to start any kind of a, a construction project or, or any, there's, there's, the DA is not complete, council has not approved a DA.
Yeah.
None of that would happen. What we would know, though, is we would have the study complete so that we can address the, the items in that in our development agreement. So it is really something that's needed before our development agreement is, is completed.
Okay. All right, that makes more sense than, thank you.
I have a question. So how much, what's the dollar value that we're going to recoup?
The costs outside of the funding.
Hundred percent.
The twenty-nine thousand or the fourteen thousand?
So.
So that's made a cost of thirty thousand dollars, and the funding's going to do fifty percent, so it's going to be fifteen thousand dollars. So the W, the Water Services Board will pay fifteen, and the municipality will pay fifteen.
No, the Water Services Board, as Ms. Shaw pointed out, will only at this point do thirty percent, and we're going to ask them to do fifty. And the other fifty percent has to go back to the developer in the end.
Correct. There would be no costs to the municipality.
No, I know that's no cost to the municipality, but I guess, is this the right thing? Because now the developer is using Water Services Boards to, to, to pay for this, because isn't the developer supposed to pay for the entire cost of the water line?
That would, that would be addressed in the development agreement. So we would bring that to you. There will be no cost to the municipality, and I'll leave the, if we could please have quiet in the, in the audience, it's very hard for the video to have the feedback of conversations.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. The-
Mr. Blenke.
Please.
But no, stop. You can't speak out of the audience. As I was saying, there will be no cost to the municipality. As I was saying, there will be no cost to the municipality, we will address the funding contribution through the development agreement. If we request the full amount, the, uh, the, the amount overfunding would be going into reserve.
Oh, so, okay, so they'll pay the thirty thousand, fifty thousand?
That will be addressed in the development agreement, so I, I think it, I, I can't speak to the development agreement now, I'm not bringing that forward at this date.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, uh, any more comments, questions? Okay.
Okay, would you, would you like me to read the resolution I suggest as amended?
Yes.
Yes, is that what you guys want? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Whereas a conditionally approved residential development known as Riverview Landing requires the municipality's water main to be extended approximately two thousand six hundred meters north along PTH nine, and whereas the Manitoba Water Services Board has advised that there are provincial funds available for engineering design services by StanTech Consulting Limited for the extension of the municipality's existing water main from its termination point on, on Provincial Highway nine, approximately one hundred meters north of Allenford Drive to approximately twenty-six hundred meters further north along PTH nine at fifty percent, or a maximum of fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents of the estimated twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollar cost, plus applicable taxes. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul requests Manageable Water Services Board's financial assistance for engineering design services by StanTech Consulting for the extension of the municipality's existing water main from its termination point on PTH nine approximately hundred, one hundred meters north of Allenford Drive to approximately twenty-six hundred meters further north along PTH nine. Two, the, the funds for the engineering design services for the extension of PTH nine water main be borne by the water reserve until such time as they can be recovered through a development agreement. And, three, the mayor and ACO be authorized to sign the cost sharing agreement once it is prepared.
Can I call for the?
We got a mover and a second.
Mended?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Councilor Packham moves it as amended, um, you second it, Councilor Bussetti seconds it?
Well, we don't have to do a vote, just as long as mover and second are in agreement.
Yeah, we're the mover and the second, I'm on that, so.
Call for the vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm opposed, carried. So now we're down to, uh, five, no, which one was, fifteen point one?
The project request, fifteen point five?
Fifteen, fifteen point five, yeah, okay. Manitoba Water Services Board capital request form instruction sheet, does anyone have any questions on this? This is for information only? Done, call.
Um, well, I'm, I'm just, um, a little confused, but about the, uh, capital project request, my understanding was that we had already, uh, applied for the Kinnebeck, Hiawatha, Minnehaha situation, right?
Right, we're going to be speaking, that was added as an addendum to in camera, we're going to speak to that further, uh, this evening.
So the, the second one then is the Rivercrest water main renewal?
Correct.
That's our second priority? Okay, good, and then the Rivers Edge Lift Station? So these are the priorities that we've identified then?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We're down to eighteen? Okay. Question period? Anyone have any questions? Anyone come, okay, come on up.
Mr. Blenke can take.
Kind of combined my comments about fifteen point five and fifteen point four. And questions? I was under the impression, and I think it's tr- uh, true, uh, as a former council member, that the sewer system phase one was to be completed by providing LIDs. Two, Hiawatha, Minnehaha, and Kinnebeck, and then also to Nye and Baldock, I don't recall everyone being included on, in either of those. I was under the impression, uh, that these, um, applications for Minnehaha, Kinneback, Hiawatha, Nye, Baldock, had already been made to the Manitoba Water Services Board in the past. But the projects hadn't been approved, but, uh, we're waiting, I recall being told that in the last term. So, um, the applications, I don't know whether or not now, they've been recognized by Manitoba Water Services Board as RM priorities already.
If I could just address through the mayor?
Yes.
Um, Manitoba Water Services Boards asks, uh, the municipality to submit, uh, projects for their five-year capital plan each year. Previously co- completed, uh, requests from previous years are not recognized, it has to be done each year, and reevaluating the priorities each year.
Thank you for clarifying that. I don't believe it was ever clarified in the past. So, the RM is going to prioritize the projects in fifteen point, is it fifteen point four?
Five.
Five, five. That's good to know. And I'm wondering why they're mixed up, uh, uh, in terms of, one is a water project, a water extension project along Holmes Road, the others are the sewer projects. I was under the impression also that the sewer was the, uh, phase one, was the priority to be finished first. Now, at the last Cal meeting, I asked about phase two of the water distribution agreement, and what projects had been completed, and what were the associated costs, and what projects were planned, and no answers have been provided. Uh, that was a good month ago or more. I do see that fifteen, um, four appears to be a future phase two project, I was seeing that before the vote. It's must have been in the works for some time, a distribution, uh, line to Riverview Landing. The RM wants fin- wants financial assistance for engineering design service to extend the existing RM distribution water main north of Allenford to the conditionally approved subdivision, Riverview Landing. To me, this means that Province Manitoba Water Services Board grant money is going to be used for the benefit of a new development. This grant money, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's not grant money, I think it is, is to be recovered by way of a DA agreement, as Councilor Clyber said, down the line, quite a long ways from now, I would assume, from having attended the public hearing on this, uh, development. Isn't there a chance that this DA could fall through, and the RM be left on the hook to pay for a line? The developer is being dependent on the RM for financing to undertake the subdivision project. I recall as a counselor, hearing the, uh, one of the RM's lawyers emphatically advise, never pay for services to be brought into a development, they pay their own. It sounds like the Water Services Grant Money will be used to pay for design services, and I've been told that Manitoba Water Services provides, uh, uh, this, organizes for that. Perhaps that was misinformation as well.
So do you have a question from all of us?
Well.
Part of it was explained already with the, the Assistant DA about the.
Okay, that's fine, well, I, 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 I really do believe that this Water Services Grant Money should not be funneled to developers. I think that's wrong.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Norma Alberg, three twelve Evelyn Avenue. Regarding the, uh, water main extension, um, it's, uh, very clear on the, uh, Water Services website, um, that upfront they state, MWSB does not assist with infrastructure development to new subdivisions. So, um, a heads up that you may not, it, you may not get even the thirty percent contribution, um, which could perhaps be better all around if, uh, this were to proceed. Clearly to extend the water main, um, there will be benefit to the broader community as well in that north end of the municipality. And so if that is done, and the, and the costs of the feasibility study can be recouped, it's perhaps better done without using this money that, as Councilor Clyber has stated, is already in the water distribution agreement. So it is locked in, and if we pull it out, and then you say you recoup it, but it's not back in that agreement, so you in fact are losing some. This a- agreement, which was struck in, uh, twenty eighteen, um, it would have been very helpful to be, um, when you're discussing this, to have a report of that project, I found this one, which is, uh, project number four of the twelve that Water Services Board has initiated over the past decade with West St. Paul. These reports, I, this one is from January twenty-seventeenth to year end of twenty sixteen. These are generated every year end by Water Services Board, and are sent to every RM that has an open project, and it itemizes clearly all the elements of that project that occurred in that year, and how the running expenditure of the total agreement is going along. Um, it, it's twofold in its intent. Number one is to invoice the RM, so that the RM can then write a check and pay back Water Services or the government for the monies that they've expended on our behalf. Its, uh, second intent is for accountability to the public, because this is all public money. So I just stumbled on this one of twenty seventeen, otherwise, I never saw or found any in any of the agendas or municipal documents for twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, so I guess first question will be, where are these annual statements of project progress for all currently open twelve projects of water or wastewater in West St. Paul for the years twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two? And that would help you, as our elected officials, make a more informed discussion and decisions on these. Um, it says there's unexpended money, but, and this, this would actually answer how much. Otherwise, if we just look at the, uh, annual report from Water Services Board, it suggests that in that, uh, water project, there's in fact over seven hundred thousand dollars, so that's not chicken change. And there can be a lot done with that, and the priority lists have stated some other priorities related to water. Uh, so if this is one that actually doesn't upfront, without further discussion, fall under the criteria for using the monies in that it's going to a new development, and it is only the thirty percent of it does, then perhaps some of these other conversations about water can also be had with Water Services Board to try to serve the existing residents who have been waiting for water. On the next, uh, item regarding the, uh, uh, priority list, and interesting to hear the addendum, which is, uh, been added for your in-camera. So I live on Evelyn, and, um, yeah, for whatever reason, we've just been omitted on the list, I g- I guess I could be completely not served, which is fine, because I have a working septic tank and field, uh, that's because, as we waited for our first twenty years here, and our tank was not doing well, and we were told, wait, 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 services are coming. In twenty fifteen, we hit the brick wall, or a crumbling brick wall, and decided we need a new tank now. So we spent then fifteen thousand dollars, so that part of our contribution to the contractor, who would hook us up if, uh, the service came down the street, we've done that. So other people who are in the RM, in that east of Main Street, the actually oldest, a- among the oldest parts of the RM, uh, they're still waiting. Phase one was clearly to have been all the properties through the municipality on the east side of Main Street, and there was sixteen million dollars put forward by the feds for that project. That could have been amortized over everybody, or divvied up over everybody, they took the first steps to go into the old subdivisions that had treatment plants. And, uh, when those were decommissioned and a pipe run in so that people could now connect to it, those individuals were levied about five, six thousand dollars on their tax bill. So for you now going in camera to discuss this new one, I want you to keep some of these numbers in mind, it's not a question, it's information for you.
Okay.
They, they averaged five to six thousand dollars per household that they were paying. Then along that way, those people were also, even though that's a low number for some of us to hear, we would wish, that's like winning the lottery, they were subsidizing developers all along the way. Over here on Baldurstone, there was a developer waiting outside the door with a large plot of land, and not subdividing it so that they could pay X amount. The, the frontage fee made that, well, they'll pay a little more, cause they have a larger lot. And so they paid the equivalent of, say, three lots, but then they put in fifty-eight. River Grove paid the equivalent of twelve lots, but they put in over two hundred. So really, and these were.
Just hold your thought for a second, our CEO has a comment to make.
With respect, we have reached fi- fifteen minutes for question period, if you do have a question, it would be prudent to, to get there.
Okay, so if, when you're considering this final, uh, LID by rolling everyone together, consider then how you will assist those one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and twenty households to deal with the cost, based on how the costs went on all the other LIDs. We will be left with a bill of approximately forty-two thousand dollars on our taxes, plus fifteen to twenty thousand at the front door to the contractor. So how will you assist those remaining old parts of the RM to deal with that?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question to the Acting CEO.
Sure, pardon me, go ahead.
Ms. Shaw, I'm just looking at the, um, Manitoba Water Services Board capital request form, and it says right here, no, projects which are not eligible for assistance from the MWSB are, uh, infrastructure to service seasonal cottages, but also new residential subdivisions, regardless of whether they are being developed by a private developer or the municipality. Now, let me ask you the question. Your engineering design that you're going to ask for, is that not a project request? And would that not be classified as a new residential subdivision request?
Right, I would say no, we've been informed by Manitoba Water Services Boards that, that we, the thirty percent is available, so.
Okay.
They've, they've said that it qualifies.
But, you know, their form says something different. Okay, so, I'm just wondering if we don't get the thirty percent, are we going to be, uh, is what happens to our resolution? Are we then paying the whole amount?
No, we wouldn't move forward with the study.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, Ms. Mayor, just in a point of order, just regarding.
Ms. Mayor, just in a point of order, just regarding, just regarding the question, the whole question period thing here. I'm just looking at our agenda, and number eight on our agenda is delegations. And so I'm just looking for some direction from the administration. Would it be more appropriate, if people wanted to speak to items on the agenda, that they speak at the beginning under number eight? Or, because I'm just, I was listening to the question period, and there really weren't, there was more comments and questions. Like I, you know, I think that it's okay to have a one-minute preamble, but to, to really not ask a question during question period? Just wondering, I think maybe there's more of a desire to speak as a delegation on the items rather than question periods. So I'm just wanting to know, how does question period work here in the RM? Pardon me, how does the delegations on number eight work? People register to speak to items on the agenda?
Correct. The municipality can entertain delegations to an agenda, and I think we would look at that as a case-by-case basis, and certainly it's something that council or attendees could consider if they-
And they would have to register with you ahead of time.
They could also reach to council, you're all available by email, telephone, in the neighborhood. So if anyone wants to impart their opinion or information or, you know, ask questions, certainly council is, is meant to be available to residents prior to the meeting. It's not something that has to wait until the evening of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Belinky?
We're, we're at time, we're at time.
We're at fifteen minutes?
We're, we're past it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, maybe we should extend it.
Not without changing our bylaw.
Well, then we should change it, because it used to be longer. It was that last administration that put it in fifteen minutes. Before that, it was longer. I ran for having question period because they took it away. And it was brought in, and then they put a time limit on it. It was never fifteen minutes until this last meeting. That's why these people are coming, is because they didn't like what the last administration was doing, okay? Some residents, this is the municipality of the residents.
And I'm a resident too.
You're supposed to work for us, not us work for you. I, no, no, I, I really, because I listened to some stuff here-
Mr. Mayor, point of order here. This is the second time that it's happened here.
There's a lot of information here with these people that you don't know.
Point of order?
That we don't know.
Okay, let's, point of order, let's go.
I understand that, but I mean, there's things that are going on that we don't see, right?
Mr. Mayor, just to be fair, if Mr. Belinky has a question, then let us let him ask his question and be fair to everybody. I'm not worried about the fifteen-minute time limit, but let him ask his question.
Okay.
As long as he have a question, it's not just-
You guys agree, let him ask his one question, or guys? Do you have one question? Go ahead, ask your one question.
Jerry Belinky, three five four Gardner Drive, West St. Paul. One, one question, I'd like the answer to, to this thirty, this $29,000, $29,000 and the thirty percent, $10,000, the developer is going to pay back the money. Are the taxpayers going to pay for that $10,000 if it's thirty percent?
I guess, I asked a question.
I know, it wasn't answered.
No, she said it was going to be done in the development agreement.
But does the, who does the money go back to? Is the question.
We, go, yeah, go ahead.
I can address, the expense would come from the reserve, and any costs recouped would go back to reserve.
It's not the question. The question is, the money that the government gave.
That would be addressed in the development agreement, okay?
No, no, I understand that. The money that the develop, that the government gave, the thirty percent, and then the development agreement is made, and the developer pays back the money. Does he pay back the thirty, the $29,000, or does he pay back the $20,000?
So that will be addressed in the development agreement. It's not, it's not created yet. I can't speak to it.
Sorry, Mr. Belinky, that's all what we can provide. I mean-
I understand that.
We have to wait for that. I know what you're looking for. Excuse me, just, just wait, you know, I, I understand what you're looking for.
Because it's-
I have the same question, I have the same question.
$10,000 of taxpayers' money that is given for a project, but is, is hidden after.
Yep, I have the same question, and she said that.
But she didn't answer it.
No, she did, she did, I mean-
Well, I don't know.
That's, that's the only answer she can give, because she can't give the future, so, I mean, we just have to wait to see what happens then. And then deal with it at that time, so.
When we don't know-
Question over here first.
Counselor Clyber, wait, hold. So Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
So I'll answer the question this way.
Okay.
So if the development agreement, if I'm on council stage when the development agreement comes and I see it, I, I will make my vote heard that any money does not get paid by the residents, that it is 100% borne by the developer. That's, that would be my vote. So that's what I'm telling you.
That's not the question.
That is the question.
We can't answer that question, because it's-
It's provincial tax dollars that is going to be paid.
Wait, okay, wait, but you know what, we've answered the question. I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Clyber.
The question that Mr. Belinky is asking is if the developer pays back the $30,000, what happens to the $10,000 grant that was given to us by Manitoba Water Services Board? That is the question. Logically speaking, and I can't speak to the development agreement, logically, that $10,000 should go back into reserves or back to Manitoba Water Services.
Correct.
Mount CAO.
The funds, the funds would go to the water reserve.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, but that will be confirmed in the development agreement, okay? Yeah. Say that.
So I guess that's it for question period, so.
You have to read the resolution and go into cameras.
Yep. So now we go down to nineteen? Nineteen, is that what it was? Nineteen one?
Nineteen one.
Okay. Be it resolved that in accordance with subsection one fifty-two of the municipal act, council does now move in camera to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages, and respecting that discussions in public could be prejudiced of municipality's ability to carry out activities or negotiations on personnel. Be it further resolved that in accordance with subsection, with section eighty-three of the municipal act, any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at a regular council meeting. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it.
Counselor Pack, uh, Beshetti moves, Counselor Clyber seconds it. Got any discussions? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Carried. So the rising report is that we discussed union, collective agreement negotiations, and dealt with executive search firm, and-
Oh, no, Mr. Mayor, we do have a resolution.
Okay.
For nineteen point three point two.
So now we read the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, resolution for, okay. Be it resolved, where's the resolution? Be it resolved that the Council of Rural Personality of West St. Paul accept a proposal submitted by Summit Search Group for Executive Search Services for the recruitment of Chief Executive Officer in the amount of eighteen percent of the successful candidate's first year base salary to a maximum of $23,000 plus applicable taxes. Any, can I have a mover, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Clyber moves, use, Counselor Beshetti seconds it. I have, anyone have any comments? This $23,000, that was the fee, but that didn't include the other fees that were there, right, for advertising?
That includes-
Included that.
The $500, what?
Yes.
The only thing I think it didn't include was a background check.
It includes one background check.
Okay, it does, okay. I thought it didn't. Okay, okay, then, good. So then can we call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Perfect. Next resolution is for the-
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before you read this resolution, I'd like to recuse myself from the room for conflict, conflict or whatever.
Yes, no, just-
However we want it worded. I don't know if it's perceived or however it needs to be worded.
Okay. So where is that resolution?
It was in your attached, in your memo that she gave you. The memo?
Yeah, we're leaning, okay. I'll let the Assistant CEO read it, please.
Yes.
Acting, sorry, thank you very much. Acting CEO.
Thank you. Whereas the Manitoba Water Services Board has advised that the municipality sewer collection system project for catchment areas of Hayawatha Avenue, Minnehaha Avenue, Kennebec Street, Nye Avenue, Baldock Street, and Evelyn Avenue have been approved to receive fifty percent provincial funding under Municipal Relations Strategic Infrastructure Basket to a maximum of $3,600,000 of the estimated $7,200,000 total project cost. Now therefore, be it resolved that the rural municipality of West St. Paul requests Manitoba Water Services Boards for, pardon me, requests the Manitoba Water Service Board's technical and financial assistance to extend wastewater servicing along Hayawatha Avenue, Minnehaha Avenue, Kennebec Street, Nye Avenue, Baldock Street, and Evelyn Avenue as part of the West St. Paul Regional Wastewater System. Approve a cost-sharing agreement between the municipality and Manitoba Water Service Board for this collection sewer project. And further be it resolved that the mayor and acting CAO be authorized to sign an agreement related to the advancement of provincial funds prior to March 31, 2023, and that the mayor and acting CAO be authorized to sign the cost-sharing agreement once it is prepared.
Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Clyber moves, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Campbell seconds it. Any comments? None? Hearing none. Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Carried. So now Georgia can come back in. Good, perfect. So Counselor Beshetti excused himself from the last vote, so now we're going to close the meeting. Okay, be it resolved that this meeting of councils stands adjourned at, and what time?
Nine ten.
Nine ten PM today. All, can I have a mover?
To move.
Counselor Pack moves, second there, Counselor Campbell seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Carried. Meeting is adjourned.